Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. And we'd like to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. We'll call on Commissioner Turner to lead us in prayer, and then Commissioner Cook will lead us in the pledge to the allegiance of the flag.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you again, Lord, for the opportunity that we've been afforded to represent our fellow constituents, Lord. We ask this evening that you give us wisdom and guidance on some of the discussions that we're going to have and the decisions that need to be made. We honor you with our attitudes, and with our actions, and with our words. We think of the holiday season, Lord, and we're thankful for Christmas and the birth of your Son, Jesus. I just ask that you continue to remind us of those who are less fortunate that are around us and don't have those same opportunities, and just encourage us to have charity in our hearts. I think about the soldiers who are overseas, Lord, who will not be home for the holidays. I just ask that you give their families an extra spirit of peace and comfort as they're away from their families during the holiday season. I ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Piercey.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Kaplan.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch. Commissioner Serrino. It's 21 present.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair Clerk. You have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion concerning their approval? Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I have had the opportunity to review them, find them in order, and move for their approval.
All right, and a second from Commissioner Jernigan. Did anyone have any corrections or additions that they have found? If not, everyone, please say aye. And any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, now we have a special resolution of recognition for a substantial number of our finest members of our county sheriff's office and our fire and rescue department, and we're going to call on Commissioner Doug Schaefer, our chairman of our Public Safety Committee.
I'd like to ask the deputies and the firefighters that participated in this rescue to come forward up here, and any other supervisors that may be here that would like to come up also. And while they're coming up, I'd just like to mention what this is. This occurred, this incident occurred on Elum Road, right near the bridge to County Farm. And I guess that's what, the east branch of the Stones River, or the middle branch, whichever it is, is out there. And four citizens of Rutherford County's lives were saved because of these gentlemen that are up here with me.
Yeah, they're all gentlemen.
And the other thing, and I'd like to mention before I read this, was that there was a high water sign was out on the roadway. This happened on December 6th. So I'd just like to pass on as a warning to everybody, when you see those high water signs after a rain or whatever, believe them. Whereas Rutherford County is fortunate to have dedicated and committed Rutherford County Sheriff's Office deputies and full-time paid Rutherford County Fire and Rescue Department firefighters who risked their lives to save citizens. And whereas on Saturday night, December 6th, 2014, the sheriff's office along with Fire and Rescue Department were called to a mother and her three daughters, whose car was becoming submerged into the Stones River at Elum Mill Road. And whereas the deputies and firefighters realized they must act quickly, attached a protective rope and plunged into the icy water with a swift current, risking their own lives. And whereas firefighters Austin Garner, Chad Alexander, and Nick Brewer, and Sheriff's Corporal Nigel Capadia, and Josh Anderson, and deputies Mike Farmer, Moses Mosby, Scott Daniel, Ramey Abraham, School Resource Officer James Coates, and Lieutenant Nathan Pagel braced the rope and assisted the deputies and firefighters and safely guided their coworkers into the water. And whereas Sheriff's Lieutenant Chris Haynes, Engineer Ryan Conley, and firefighter Daniel Alexander, and Sheriff's Sergeant Brian Wright rescued the daughters and mother from the car. Now therefore, be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to these officers and firefighters for their teamwork and bravery for risking their own lives to save this family. Resolve this 11th day of December 2014. I so move.
Second from Commissioner Phillips, and he, et cetera. And I was, okay, all of you in favor of this, then please say aye.
Aye.
That is clearly unanimous. Thank you very, very much. (Applause)
I think this just goes to show that when the sheriff's office and the fire department and even EMS shows up on the scene, we do everything we can to work as one team to mitigate the emergency and to protect life, and I think this is a great example of what we've done tonight. And I'm proud of these guys, every one of them.
Echo what he said, but the commitment that each and every one of these officers, these firefighters have for the community and caring for the community, on behalf of them, I thank you.
Thank you very much.[427.22][427.22](Applause) All right, thank you, Commissioner Schaefer, and thank all of these gentlemen for their service. We very, very much appreciate it. And I know that mother and her three children are even more thankful maybe than we are. Okay. All right, next, we have a time for public comments, and we have one person that is asked to speak, and we'd like for this person, Michelle Palmer, to come forward and give us her name and address and make her comments. And I think you know that three minutes is about what we allow. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Palmer, and my address is 2319 Hillmont Drive. I'm with Read to Succeed and One Book of Rutherford County, and thank you all so much for letting me speak tonight at your meeting. I'm here on behalf of Read to Succeed, which has been promoting literacy in Rutherford County for over 10 years. I know you're familiar with and participate in some of our programs such as Reading in the Schools, Reading Rally, Unplug &amp; Read, Read to Be, and our many family and adult literacy programs. I'm here tonight to bring your attention to this year's One Book Community Read program, which is now in its eighth year. Each year, we join with the Linebaugh Library, area media outlets, and various other community partners in asking adults in Rutherford County to all read the same book. Over the years, we've promoted nonfiction, literary fiction, and popular young adult choices. This year, we've selected The Rosie Project by Graham Simsian. In Graham Simsian's novel, The Rosie Project, we meet Don Tillman, a brilliant yet socially inept genetics professor who decided it's time he found a wife. In the orderly, evidence-based manner with which Don approaches everything, he designs The Wife Project to find his perfect partner, a 16-page scientifically valid survey to filter out the drinkers, the smokers, and the late-arrivers. He meets Rosie German, who possesses all of these qualities, and Don easily disqualifies her as a candidate for The Wife Project. But Don is intrigued by Rosie's own quest to find her own biological father. When an unlikely relationship develops, Don is forced to confront the spontaneous whirlwind that is Rosie, and the realization that despite your best scientific efforts, you don't find love, it finds you. This book is about hope, love, relationships, and the desire we all have to be accepted. Each year, One Book chooses a nonprofit partner to work with and bring attention during One Book promotions. And this year, our community partner for One Book is Autism Speaks, since The Rosie Project's main character, Don Tillman, is an adult dealing with the autism spectrum disorder of Asperger's Syndrome. The Rosie Project, which will be followed by The Rosie Effect this Christmas, has been on the New York Times Bestseller List for more than 14 weeks and is an international bestseller. According to USA Today, Graham Simsian's distinctive debut navigates the choppy waters of adult relationships both romantic and platonic with a fresh take. We are eager for Rutherford County to experience this book and the discussion it inspires. I brought a copy, of course, to pass around, so whoever would like to have it first, we ask that you read it, pass it on to some of your other fellow commissioners, and to maybe go to our, oh, I saw a hand up. Yours was first. So please pass it on to each other. It's a really great book. It's a fun book, several laugh-out-loud moments, and I think you'll really enjoy it. We're very excited to be pairing up with Autism Speaks. They have their first chapter here in Middle Tennessee just starting this year, so we're really very, very excited about the wonderful things that are going to be coming. So, for you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Palmer. And thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you. As an unmarried person who does seem to take a scientific approach to finding a wife, this might be a good benefit for me in that quest, but this is a very worthwhile project. I've read the books in the past, and I look forward to reading this one and passing it on to the rest of you.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is elections and confirmations, and we call on Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, before you, you'll see a list of notaries that need to be approved. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
And a second, Commissioner McAdoo. All right, any questions? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries.
We also need to nominate an alternate vacancy on the beer board. Steering recommends Mr. Michael Anderson. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for his approval.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
We have three vacancies on the Agriculture Advisory Board for Commissioner, Farmer, and Farm Woman positions. Steering recommends Commissioner Joe Frank Jernigan, Ms. Delia Bigger Goodman for the Farm Woman position, and Anthony Scales for the Farmer position. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We also need to fill the coroner vacancies. Steering recommends Mr. Mike Nunley. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for his approval.
All right, second from Commissioner P. and others. Any questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We also have two vacancies to fill on the Correctional Works Center Board. Steering recommends Mr. Virgil Gammon and Mr. Tim Rudd. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
And a second, Commissioner Nipper. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
And finally, we have a vacancy on the Conservation Board that would fill an unexpired term for Mr. David Mitchell. Steering recommends the appointment of Mr. John Marshall, and the term will expire in February of 2017. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for his approval.
Second, Commissioner Pettis Reed. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
One more thing, just for general information. Steering has also set a time to meet with the legislators, and that will be at our regular steering meeting on Monday, January 5th. We'll meet with the Rutherford County delegation here at the courthouse at 5:30.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Turner. All right, we'll move on down to unfinished business, and there is no unfinished business that we're aware of. So we'll start on the reports by our standing committees. There is not a report tonight from our Purchasing Committee, so we're ready to start our Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee report from Commissioner Jordan.
Item K2A, Resolution. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Special Purpose Fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Department, increase revenue asset forfeiture funds $17,574, increase expenditures, instructions, supplies, materials $3,506, law enforcement equipment $10,563, and other equipment $3,505. Resolve this 11th day of December 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second, Commissioner Schaefer. Any questions or discussion? If not, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Ms. Cook and Mr. Piercey will give you an opportunity. All right, now, everyone has voted. Record the votes, please.
21 yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item K2B, Resolution. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with the Tennessee Department of Health, a copy of the same being attached here, too, as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth at length verbatim, for the provision of health services toward the support of the Rutherford County Health Department in the amount of $706,056, with $577,681 being direct local funds for which Rutherford County shall not be billed, and $128,375 in appropriations for which Rutherford County shall be billed for the period of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. Resolve this 11th day of December 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second, Commissioner Serrino. Does anyone have any questions or discussion about this? If not, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, everyone has voted. Record the votes, please.
21 yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item K2C, Resolution. Where Rutherford County previously entered into an agreement with the Tennessee Department of Health for the provision of employee services for Health Department Director on May 15, 2014. And whereas the Tennessee Department of Health has recalculated the annual amount from the previous agreement and desires to amend the agreement for the Health Department Director to $9,176 for the period of November 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. And whereas Rutherford County desires to enter into an agreement with the Tennessee Department of Health for the provision of employee services for the Health Department physician in the amount of $9,032 for the period of November 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with the Tennessee State Department of Health in the amount of $9,176 for Director and $9,032 for the physician for the provision of employee services for the period of November 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. A copy of the same attached here, too, as Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 11th day of December 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And Commissioner Nipper, second on that. Does anyone have any questions regarding this? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item K2D, Rutherford County, Tennessee, Amendment of Contract in Lieu of Performance Bond. Whereas Rutherford County and the State of Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation entered into a contract in lieu of performance bond for proper operation and closure and/or post-closure of the Rutherford County Sanitary Landfill Permit Number SNL 75-0103. And whereas said contract, including a provision allowing the Commission of Environment and Conservation to collect up to $3,096,951 from any funds being dispersed or to be dispersed from the State of Tennessee of Rutherford County as financial assurance of said proper operation, closure, and post-closure. And whereas the state and the county of Rutherford desire to change the amount of said financial assurance from $3,096,951 to $2,948,394. Paragraph 3 of the agreement in lieu of performance bond is amended as follows. The figure $3,096,951 is deleted, and the figure $2,948,394 is substituted herein thereof. Resolve this 11th day of December 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Piercey. Does anyone have any questions on this?
Is the standard with the landfill, that'll go away in about 4,000 more years.
All right. If there are no further questions, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Right, record the votes, please.
21 yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item K2E, Resolution. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the 2015-2016 budget calendar and schedule be approved, a copy of the same being attached here, too, as Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2, and incorporated herein by reference as if set length at length verbatim, with the adoption date of the 2015-16 budget schedule for June 26, 2015 at 9:00 a.m. Resolve this 11th day of December 2014. This is just the calendar for next year's meetings, and there have been copies of all put in the commissioners' mailboxes. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second from Mr. P. Anyone have any questions or discussion about this? If not, then, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's passed. Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Two months ago, I mentioned Commissioner Kush had become engaged. Well, that's about a week and a half ago. He is now married, so congratulations to Commissioner Kush.[1305.13][1305.13](Applause)
I believe that made us, I'm not sure, but that made us leave with one more opportunity. Is that right?[1313.01][1313.01](Laughter) Okay, okay. Let's see. There is not a report from the Health and Education Committee. We do have one small item here from the Property Management Committee. Mr. McAdoo, please.
Here, oh, you've got it for him.
Resolution to authorize and approve the sale of 1.3 acres on Coleman Hill Road. Whereas Rutherford County acquired 1.3 acres on Coleman Hill Road through donation, and whereas efforts has been undertaken for the disposition of said tract, including advertisement for sale and notification to adjacent landowners. And whereas if no qualified bid is received, the property can be disposed of to commission approval, and whereas an adjacent neighbor has made an offer of $500 for said Coleman Hill Road property. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, said 1.3 acres on Coleman Hill Road be sold for $500. Be it resolved, appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County are hereby authorized to execute required documents for closure of the sale. Resolve this 11th day of December 2014, and I so move.
Second, Commissioner Cook. Now, is any further discussion or questions? All right, then, it's a small amount of money, but we'll still have to vote on it. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Just one moment. Okay, if you'll just give me permission, without objection, it's $500, so we're going to voice for what is in there, even though it does involve money. And if anyone objects, they can tell me, and we can note it that way. All of you in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any that wish to vote? No. So we'll count this as everyone had an opportunity to vote individually. I apologize. All right, Mr. McAdoo, and I apologize for my previous statement. I was in error. There are two opportunities here, so we'll (laughter) so my apologies to those that know who I'm talking to. Thank you very much. All right, let's see. There's no Public Safety Committee report, and there is a resolution from the Public Works and Planning Committee. In fact, there are two resolutions. So Commissioner Jernigan, we still have five minutes before public hearing, so we're doing very, very well.
Okay, first resolution from Public Works and Planning is a resolution to approve the Road Board Book. Whereas the Tennessee County Uniform Road Laws of 1974 has set out various civil and criminal penalties for the working on private roads by the County Highway Department personnel. And whereas the Road Board has approved the list of Rutherford County roads as submitted by the road superintendent. And whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of the Rutherford County roads as submitted by the road superintendent. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county commission approve the list of Rutherford County roads as submitted by the road superintendent in accordance with Tennessee Code annotated 54-10-103 and 54. These roads should be the only roads which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department. Resolve this 11th day of December 2014. I so move.
And a second from Commissioner Piercey and others. Anyone have a question on this? If not, all of you in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay, the second resolution. To approve the proposed proposal with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for traffic signal and turn lanes at the intersection of US 41 and Dilton-Mackin Road. Whereas the attached proposal, federal project number PHSIP-2238, state project number 175004-2211-94, by and between the Department of Transportation of the State of Tennessee and Rutherford County, provides for installation of a traffic signal at State Route 2 intersection at Dilton-Mackin Road. A copy of said proposal be attached here, too, as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at length verbatim, as if set forth herein. And whereas it is best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter into this proposal with the State of Tennessee. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other required county officials be, and they are hereby authorized, to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, the proposal with the Department of Transportation of the State of Tennessee, federal project number PHSIP-2238, state project number 75004-2210-94, for installation and maintenance of a traffic signal at State Route intersection at Dilton-Mackin Road, according to the terms and provisions contained in this proposal. Resolve this 11th day of December 2014. I so move.
Second, Commissioner, well, I can't even think of his, Dodd.[1747.86][1747.86](Laughter) You've got to make, you have to second more motions than I'll get your name down right.[1752.51][1752.51](Laughter) All right, anyone have any questions about this? Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes, one thing. What responsibility does the county have for any of the construction or maintenance of this, and what happens when the city of Murfreesboro annexes this area?
I don't know about the last question, but we have no basic responsibility for the cost of this, putting it in. But for the maintenance, I believe already previously, we signed an agreement, and you've already authorized for us to maintain the light once it's put in. But the state is going to provide all the costs for making this happen, including easements and right-of-ways, et cetera. But now, when it's annexed, I guess the only thing that would happen then potentially is the maintenance would not be our responsibilities in is the maintenance would not be our responsibility since it's not in the county anymore. Maybe the city would take the responsibility for that. I don't know precisely. Any other questions? All right, this is a win-win. It's a safety improvement and will benefit those people, you know, very much there to improve their ability to come in and out of that Dilton-Mackin Road on the Manchester Highway. If there's no further question, then all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Jernigan. There's not a report from the Steering Committee. Is there any other business that anyone wishes to bring before this committee?
Sir? Hold on just a minute. Boy, I really have to move along. We skipped over that completely. Thank you, Chairman of the Planning Commission. Let's go back to our public hearing, which is in the very first part of our agenda and we've never done this before. So we'll call on Mr. Damasi to tell us about various amendments to Section 1405 and 1406 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to rules and procedures for the Board of Zoning Appeals and Administrative Appeals. The applicant is our planning staff.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you and good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. I know, I think this is the first time this has happened, that we've got through the entire agenda before we got to the public hearing, so I'll only take at least, at the most, an hour to go through this. In all seriousness, I might take just a minute or two. When the zoning ordinance was adopted back in November of 2012, which became effective in January of 2013, most of the rules and procedures for the Board of Zoning Appeals were found in their bylaws, but we codified them into the new ordinance. We were recently just reviewing the BZI bylaws and comparing them to the rules and procedures that are found in the zoning ordinance and found a few things didn't quite make it into the ordinance. So all we're doing here is adding in those items that were in the bylaws to make them consistent, really is all we're doing here. None of the changes that you have in this packet, it's on your iPads, I've got the whole section in there. That's not everything. Only things that we're looking at really is anything bolded and underlined or struck through. The amendments are minor. I'll be more than happy to go through any of these if you'd like, but just so the commission understands that there are no rules that are changing, no procedures changing with the Board of Zoning Appeals as a result of these amendments, we just wanted to codify these in here to make everything consistent. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this by unanimous vote.
Okay, are there any questions of Mr. Damasi before we have the public hearing? All right, thank you then. We will declare the public hearing open with respect to this request from our planning staff on item 14-5004 with the amendments to the rules and procedures for the BZA and administrative appeals. Is there anyone wishes to speak to that? Come forward and give us your comments. And I don't see anyone in our audience that wishes to speak. Therefore, we'll declare the public hearing closed. And do we have a motion concerning the approval of this? Mr. Kush, you're making a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Commissioner Phillips, now, any discussion or questions or clarification? If not, all of you in favor of this, then please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Damasi. Now, we'll give you an opportunity for any other business. Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to bring up a discussion or a topic that's somewhat of a sore spot, but it involves the unfolding fiasco with the Circuit Court Clerk's Office and the software system that has been shelved over there. But about two years ago, this body appropriated close to $750,000 to upgrade the technology in that office. And even more has been spent, incidentally, through employees and et cetera to get the program up and running. And then, for some reason or another, the software wasn't what it was supposed to be or there was some unhappiness with it or whatnot. But I was walking down the halls of the judicial building the last week or two and I heard the old dot matrix printers again. Yes, dot matrix printers and we're still using carbon copy paper in some of these court clerks' offices. But this body decided that we were going to appropriate those funds from our county general fund to get that office going in the direction of the technology and to go paperless in the future, et cetera, with internet filing and so forth. And now that the project has been canceled, of course, we've gone back to the vendor that we had before. But this leads to all kinds of questions. What went wrong with the software? Why were we not consulted when the project was terminated since this was funded from our money? Should we have been paying more attention all along with this? We need to be sure that this doesn't happen again. And I understand that the mayor is working with our county attorney's office and the circuit court clerk to get to the bottom of this and find out what our position is with the facts and the legal arguments and so forth. But in the next month or so, we need to either set up an ad hoc committee or use the steering committee as a way for us to find out what's going on with this. This was $2,000 or $3,000, it would be one thing, we could take the sting and move forward. But this is about $1 million. This is not something that we're just going to let go of without getting to the bottom of it. And so I had talked to Mayor Burgess earlier today and he thinks it takes about another month for them to get to the bottom of it from therein. But this isn't just his problem, this is our problem. We are responsible for the money that came out of the county general fund. We appropriated that and so we need to be very aware of what's going on with that. I think that everybody would agree that we're accountable to our constituents for the money that we appropriate. And to have this amount of money just go away and nothing to show for it is very disturbing. So we've got to get to the bottom of that. And I'm not sure if that's the steering committee that should have a special meeting and call all the people in who are involved with this and get them to look into the camera and give answers to these questions. I'm hearing lots of rumors, misinformation, this person tells you this, somebody else tells you that. And with this amount of money, we need to get to the bottom of exactly what happened and who knew what when. And I'm kind of getting frustrated with my efforts to get information. Hopefully, if we have a committee that's looking at it and calls in, that calls in all of the stakeholders, we can get some truth and find out what went wrong so that this won't happen again in the future. But we decided as a commission, maybe I misunderstood, that we were going to push toward a technology-based future. The records commission on which I serve as a member, we want to have more paperless offices in the future. We want to move forward with technology to quit creating more files and more paper documents. That creates more freed-up space if we don't have to keep these files. So now we're going back to the old way. We're still creating more and more paper files. Other courts are starting to go paperless, the federal courts, the bankruptcy courts are all internet filings. The clerks don't have to input any information and that's the direction that we need to go. We're looking at building this really expensive judicial building and if we could get the clerks' offices to go paperless, we wouldn't have to have as much space for the clerks' offices. Instead of having rooms with shelves full of paper files that continue to grow, we could have a server that contained all the files on it. And we could save a lot of space and a lot of money. So we're just not doing this dance where we continue down this old path from the 1980s software and keep doing things the way we've always done it. We're just not going to do that. We need to move forward and certainly, I'm not willing to appropriate any more money for any kind of programs unless they move forward with technology. We can't keep creating more paper documents. But I'm just very concerned about this. I want to get answers. I think that we all need to be very diligent and aware of what's going on with this. Like I said, we're all responsible to the constituents for how we spend their money. This is something that we have got to do to move forward with technology. And I hope that in the next month or so, after Mayor Burgess and the county attorney get to the bottom of it from therein, that we will take our responsibility and look into this as well. That's a lot of money that we don't have anymore and we need a very good explanation of where it went.
All right, thank you. Any other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Nipper?
If I could address, kind of echo what Mr. Stevens said there about this situation, that I find it hard to believe after spending over $700,000 that we're not further along in this, getting this technology through there. I believe we really do need to look at it and I wholeheartedly support what Mr. Stevens says here and just want to echo to everyone that we need to look at this very seriously, that spending a million dollars to get technology, to get this on servers, should already be done by now. I've heard complaints over the years of, well, you know, one system doesn't want to talk to the other, one department doesn't want to change their ways. We all need to change for the better and I think we all need to take a closer look at it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. P.
Well, since this keeps getting brought up, I just wanted to point out the mayor came to Budget Committee, I don't know if any other committees were addressed, about this, said that he was looking into it and would be back to us. Do you have actually a time you're going to speak to us on it yet lined up, Mayor?
Don't have an actual time, but we're working on this daily with the county attorney and others. I do want to, I only want to make one comment. We have not canceled the arrangement with New Dawn. It's, or we haven't terminated that arrangement. It's simply set aside until we can decide how to move forward appropriately and effectively and we can have day-to-day business being transacted over there. But we are working carefully. This is extraordinarily complex project and it has much, much difficulty in really determining what course of action is the most appropriate course of action. And when we have even a hint of a recommendation or two, we will bring that forward to you. It likely may need to be done in an executive session. But anyway, we will keep you advised and we will ask for your comments and your consent and to whatever we all agree together is the right course of action sooner than later and hopefully within the next month or so. Any other questions? All right, Mr. Kaplan and then Mr. Schaefer.
I would like to publicly ask at the budget and finance meeting two months ago, we asked the county clerk to, when they asked for the extension for the old program so we can continue next year from the general fund balance, we had asked for her to bring a report to our budget and finance meeting just recently. And unfortunately, we didn't receive that, so I would like to publicly say we would like for her to come to the next budget and finance meeting with that report of where we're at, what's the progress, what's an update, because these are answers that we do need to give to our constituents and I was relying on that report from her, so.
I understand, but again, we will ask your indulgence to listen to the advice and wisdom of our county attorneys before we publicly disclose this and debate this until we have a decision set and a course of action that you agree with from our legal viewpoint. Mr. Schaefer?
I'd like to say just one thing on this subject, but it's, the circuit court is where this is located, not with the county clerk. I don't think she wants to take that on right now. But we had, just to go along, we had big briefings on this from the former circuit court clerk and extensive time and she was here the night we voted on it here and she's presented the whole thing, the budget committee. What we heard was a heck of a lot better than what we have and what we had to go back to, but you got to keep it running is why we, they went back to it because they're not getting this work and we're probably got a good chance it's going to be a nice, long legal battle is what it could very easily wind up. And that's why, you know, we can't do a whole lot until we find out our standings and whether it's been, the contract's been violated, et cetera. But I wanted to, only thing I wanted, I wanted to mention two other things. I just wanted to let you all know that there is not a ham breakfast in Laverne this month, but this Saturday morning at 7 o'clock on Gamble Lane, the Rescue Squad has a pancake breakfast from 7 to 10 with Santa there. So that's for all the kids. The other thing, and I've read about this a couple places and I went down to it. Laverne Middle School, Principal Holman passed several years on the last day of school before Thanksgiving. They have gotten the community and gathered sponsors and have fed approximately 500-plus people down the, in the area down of Lake Forest, if you know where that is. And it is by, nowhere near the richest area in our county. There's an awful lot of rich homes down there. But what I would like to say is I'd like to congratulate Laverne Lake and what they have done in the last few years there to help those less fortunate in our county.
Anyone else have any announcements or other business? Ms. Allen?
This Saturday night down at the Historic Depot in Smyrna, we're going to have Santa Claus. We're going to have carriage rides, smores, fire pits, entertainment, so bringing the kids out should be a lot of fun and sponsored by your downtown merchants in Smyrna.
Commissioner P, I mean Pettis Reed?
Mr. Chairman, after you get through in Laverne with the pancakes down there, we invite you to the diamond on the western horizon, Iggleville, Tennessee, for our annual Christmas parade out that way. It's going to be at 11 o'clock. It'll be a great parade, give you an opportunity to come out. And this year, our grand marshal is the principal of Iggleville High School. He's done an outstanding job out there. But Mr. Bill Tollit will be the grand marshal and invite everybody to come out and Santa Claus will be there too. So he's really going to get around Saturday, so come on out.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Anyone else have anything they'd like to say? The holiday season is upon us and we wish all of you a happy holiday season and a happy new year. And if there's no other business before tonight, we are adjourned. Thank you.